Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our August 5th, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting this morning. Our first order of business will be please stand if you're able and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the audience might notice that Commissioner Pap has gone today, but he is at Farm Fest with some Congress members talking about SNAP and the nutrition program here in the state of Minnesota, so he will not be joining us today, but a very important piece of his job that he had to deal with today. So, thank you, Kevin, for doing that. Josh, gender review.
Yeah, gender review. Mr. Chair, one item we do need to pull from the agenda this morning is the Basset Drive Agreement, which this pertains to the road extension going for where the new VCA facility's going to be. Just weren't able to get that across the finish line this last couple of days, so we need to pull that, and we'll be looking at bringing that back in a couple of weeks for board approval.
All right, thank you.
I would move to approve with the pulling of the Basset Drive Agreement.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is item number three, the County Ditch 56 Acceptance Hearing. At this time, we will be doing our ditch 56, branch 22 acceptance hearing. Are there any changes to today's agenda?
No.
No changes? Do I have a motion for the agenda for the ditch?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The purpose of the day's hearing is to determine whether the contractor for the improvement of County Ditch 56, branch 22, has completed their contract in accordance with the plans and specifications. The order of business for this hearing is as follows: Staff will review the jurisdictional documents, we hear from the appointed engineers, and then we will open it up for public comment. Now, we'll ask Craig Osserson, County Ditch Manager, to go over the jurisdictional documents.
Okay. Notice was posted for this hearing outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse located at 204 South Fifth Street, Mankato, Minnesota. Hearing notice was mailed on July 22nd, 2025. Notice of public hearing was published in the Mankato Free Press on July 25th, 2025. The Blue Earth County Ditch 56 is in Lincoln and Garden City Townships. Blue Earth County Drainage Authority established the improvement on December 19th, 2023. The project was awarded to Selly Escavating. The Property and Environmental Resources Department staff received the engineer's acceptance report for this petitioned improvement. All contractual work has been completed by the contractors. The purpose of an acceptance hearing is to determine if the contractor has completed the work in accordance with the plans and specifications. When a drainage authority accepts a contract, it will order the payment of the remaining balance due on the contract. The acceptance hearing also starts a three-year warranty period for tile work and a one-year warranty period for all open ditch work. Today, we are asking the Drainage Authority to accept the draft of the findings and orders, approving the engineer's acceptance report for the County Ditch 56, branch 22 improvement project, and release any final payments due to the contractors for the project and to pay damages as shown in the engineer's report.
Thank you, Craig. Can I get a motion to accept those documents?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, we'll hear from our appointed engineer for this project. Jacob, are you taking this?
I'll take it.
Okay. Jacob, please introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. I'm Chris Adams with ISG, filling in for Jeff Brandl, who is the signing engineer. I was involved in this project as the construction project manager from time of bidding through closeout. So, just a quick presentation for you. The CD 56 overall watershed, you can see on the screen there, it's located just south of Lake Crystal, Minnesota. That purple, the watershed itself is the red boundary that you see there. The construction area is the purple area that you see in the center of the map there. So, this is the CD 22, or the CD 56, branch 22 watershed. The black line you see there is the existing location of the existing main, as it existed prior to construction. The green lines there are the proposed, which were constructed. We've got some photos there. You can see the outlet into the CD 56 open ditch there in the top left, some of the tile construction underway. And then in the far right-hand corner, you can see the finished condition of the tillable land after the work was done. A little on the construction timeline of this project, so it was bid on February 16th, 2024, awarded to Selly Construction. They were the lowest bidder. Contract was fully executed on April 16th of '24. The contract had two required dates. November 30th, 2024 was substantial completion deadline of the contract, and the work was to be final completion, meaning ready for final payment by December 30th. Construction occurred primarily between May 6th and June 11th of 2024, was substantially completed, meaning everything was functioning according to plans and specs as of June 11th of '24. As typical process, ISG televises all pipe 30 to 60 days after the work is complete, so that took place on July 11th. We did find some issues on the very top end of this system. There was a heavy amount of sediment in the pipe, the newly constructed pipe, which was later found to be coming from an existing main that was full of sediment. Out of sensitivity to the landowners, we asked the contractor to delay the repair of that work and the jetting until after harvest, so they returned December 11th, first to jet the pipe. They got it cleaned out, but found that it sedimented back in, so they had to return again in July or January of this year. They severed off that existing pipe that was causing issues and then jetted it clean. We reexamined the pipe, found it to be in good working order, so recommended accepting the work. So, that final work, just touch-up work on site, occurred on February 25th of this Construction, so the FER estimate was $193,0573. We had a good competitive number from Selly, time of award for $141,724. The total costs on the contract were $162,249. We had some overrun in the granular foundation, which is rock that will add if there's unstable soils, which this area is known for difficult soils and difficult construction. And then also just some overrun on private tile connections. There were more there than we anticipated. So, paid to date is $145,524, and the amount owed is $16,724.91, which is all retainage. So, it is the engineer's recommendation that Selly Construction has successfully completed the work in accordance with plans and specs. They have provided all of the required documents, and we recommend accepting the work and issuing final payment to the contractor. The other part of this is accepting damages, so ISG measured the damages during construction. You can see most of them occurred over the proposed alignment. There were some additional, or some access routes. Site conditions were difficult, so they did reach agreements with the landowners to follow that property line there between the Case and Ramey properties, as well as the drive of, the buffer strip was difficult to drive with their heavy equipment, so they had to go just outside of the buffer strip on the northeast side of the site. All in all, though, total measured damages were 11.87 acres. That compares to 10.62 acres that were estimated, so a slight overrun on damages, but nothing There's also abandonment of the existing line, so the gold line there in that drawing is the existing pipe, which will now be abandoned after this project is accepted. The green is the new county main. Asbills have been completed. We noted all locations of connections, bends. We have this available, this information available via GPS as well. Then, total project costs, the complete improvement estimate at time of approved FER was $284,809. There's a little bit of projection baked into this with the CA estimate, as well as the county administrative costs, but we're projecting $288,737 for the total project cost, so just a little over. Finally, it's the engineer's opinion that the County Ditch 56 project has been completed. We recommend abandoning the existing tile, paying damages, and beginning the warranty period. Any questions?
Any questions from the board for Chris at this point? Oh, good report, Chris. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we open up the public comment portion of the hearing. If you would like to make a comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and there's a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit time allotted to a person who has marked a repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone from the comment that would like, anybody from the public that would like to comment? Please come to the podium. Thank you.
My name is Darren Davis. I currently reside in Mapleton, but I was born and raised in Rapidan, Minnesota. My mother, Gail Davis over there, in these last rainstorms we've had, she's received a significant amount of water in her basement, resulting in damages to her furnace, water heater, and her water softener unit. This is the third time she's had damage in her basement, water of over two feet, in the last 10 years. And she's been in contact with Kevin Pap about possibly seeing if there's anything the county could do to help mitigate the water collecting in her front yard and on her property. She lives at 18969552nd Avenue, which is just south of the St. John's Lutheran Church in Rapidan. And historically, it's been a low spot in town, and it does collect water. However, in this last storm, you could physically drive up and see the water level up to the road, and on the west side of the road, there is no water, and the public roadway is obstructing the natural flow of the water there. So, I was wondering if I could bring it to you guys' attention, if we could possibly look at getting a survey done to maybe install a spillway. She's brought it up in the past to maybe put like a culvert or something in, and 10 years ago, I believe she had a survey done, and they said that her ditch was lower than the other side of the road, so a culvert would not be applicable for that scenario. But that public roadway that runs north and south through the center of Rapidan to Good Thunder acts as a dam, and it stops all of the water. The last time, she had to have her neighbor contact 911 and get ahold of a sheriff to come and block the road off to be able to pump the water out of her yard, because it was coming in her back door.
Okay. I'm a little familiar with this project, but this doesn't have anything to do with the 56 ditch, so this is, okay. So, we will take that under advisement. This hearing is for the county ditch that we're working on.
Yep.
But we'll make note of that. I'll have Josh follow up with you and Commissioner Pap.
I just figured the first opportunity.
Well, yeah.
But, yeah, I would like, I would like somebody to look into it, because this has been an ongoing issue, and I've taken time off of work, and it's causing her damage, and it's stressful for her.
Understood. And just for, just for the future, if you'd like to address the board, and I appreciate you coming and talking to the board, and you had it in today because of the public hearing for this, but if this wouldn't, if we wouldn't have had another public hearing, you wouldn't have had a chance to speak to us without letting us know in advance. We're happy to have you come visit and speak with us.
Yep.
But we need to know in advance, so.
Yeah, and I believe she contacted Kevin Pap about that.
Yep.
And tried to get put on the, on the today's meeting, and I, if it's not on the docket, then yeah, it didn't happen, so I figured.
Call it.
First chance.
Call it in the administration.
We'll follow up with this, so.
All right, well, I appreciate it.
We'll check with Kevin and the engineer and get back to you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, second time, anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 56 acceptance hearing? And last time, anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 56 acceptance hearing?
I just want to know the total cost of the project.
Chris, you want to hit that again? I don't have it pulled up on my screen. Maybe speak a little louder, maybe he didn't hear it the first time.
Sure, yep. So, there's a little projection baked into this, because there's some unknown costs still, but at the time.
Can you hear him okay?
Can you speak up a little?
You do need to speak up, Chris.
Okay, apologies, yeah.
You're very soft-spoken.
I'll try to work on that. So, projected total project cost right now is $288,737, and that is still just a projection. There's a few unknowns yet. And that compares to an estimate at the time of FER of $284,809, so we're projecting to be just a little over $4,000 over budget.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, last time, anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 56? Okay, hearing no other comments. Can I please get a motion to accept the findings and repairs and pay the final bill?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, this time, we will move into County Ditch 79 acceptance hearing. Craig?
Okay. Notice was posted for this hearing outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse located at 204 South Fifth Street, Mankato, Minnesota. The hearing notice was mailed on July 22nd, 2025. A notice of public hearing is also published in the Mankato Free Press on July 25th, 2025. The Blue Earth County Ditch 79 is in Judson Township. The Blue Earth County Drainage Authority established the improvement on December 12th, 2023. The project was awarded to GM Contracting, Inc. The Property and Environmental Resources Department staff received the engineer's acceptance report for the petitioned improvement. All contractual work has been completed by the contractors. The purpose of the acceptance hearings is to determine if the contractor has completed the work in accordance with the plans and specifications. When a drainage authority accepts a contract, it will order the payment of the remaining balance due on the contract. The acceptance hearing also begins a three-year warranty period for tile work and a one-year warranty period for open ditch work. Today, we are requesting the Drainage Authority accept the draft of the findings and order approving the engineer's acceptance report for the County Ditch 79 improvement project and the, to release of any of the final payments due to the contractors for the project and to pay damages as shown in the engineer's report.
All right, thank you, Craig. First thing we need to do, though, is do an agenda review. I'm sorry, that's right, I was, I mean, any, there's no changes to the agenda?
No.
Do you have a motion for the agenda?
Moved to approve.
Got a motion and a second for the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At today's hearing, we're going to talk about the acceptance plans for the CD 79. We just heard the jurisdictional documents. Is there any questions on them? If not, I would entertain a motion for the jurisdictional documents.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we will hear from the engineers, and it looks like we got Jacob coming up today. Please.
All righty. Thank you, members of the board. My name is Jacob Mueller. I work at ISG. The project we're going to be talking about today is County Ditch Number 79. I worked on this project as a graduate engineer under the supervision of the appointed engineer, Charles J. Brandl. A little bit about this system. The map we're looking at here is the watershed map. The red boundary is the watershed boundary. The black line you see constitutes the pre-existing subsurface public tile that constituted of a mainline tile, branch one tile, and a branch two tile. This outletted into a number, unnamed waterway to the west and essentially went east across the north-south gravel road. A few photos from construction can be seen here. The photos at the top predominantly reflect the construction conditions at the system outlet into the unnamed creek. As shown, there's a lot of extra armoring and riprap placed in this location to protect this, this public water. Pictures on the bottom reflect construction conditions and tile installation. Conditions were relatively favorable for this project, and as such, we were able to work in relatively stable clays for the majority of the time. A bid on construction timeline, the bid date was May 24th of 2024. This was awarded to GM Contracting, as they were the low bidder. The contract was fully executed on July 16th of 2024. The original contract times had two important dates, being substantial completion on December 30th of 2024 and final completion at the end of January in 2025 of this year. The actual construction timeline, the majority of the work occurred between October 15th and March 28th, or October 15th of 2024 to March 28th of 2025. The project was substantially complete on December 6th of 2024, adhering to our original timeline. Our final televising, which occurs approximately 30 days after final construction efforts have occurred to allow that pipe to settle and make sure that everything is in its settled condition and measure all those joint gaps and whatnot, was January 10th. Being that this occurred in mid-winter, the punch list was not fully completed until March of 2025. This was after our initial final completion, but there were some roadways that needed to be regraded and reseeded, and by nature of that work is undesirable to complete in the winter, so we allowed them to complete that in the spring, so we could ensure that their final seeding would establish and whatnot. So, that was within our, that was something we discussed with them and found to be acceptable at the time. Bid on costs, at the time of, of the final engineer's report, the, the total estimated costs for construction were about $519,028. GM, we had very competitive bidding at this time. GM came in at $457,000 and $143,000. The total, the total costs after construction were $439 and $140. There was about a little, about $18,000 in savings. This was mainly due to granular bedding material, the soils were a bit better than we had expected, and also private tile connections. We ran into a few less than we had anticipated at the time of plan formation. There was a single change order made for the amount of $827,058. This was just to an account for one additional bid item that we didn't expect to encounter, which was an eight-inch tile connection. So, to date, there has been $402,305.88 paid. The amount due at this point is $37,110.32. GM has provided all the requirements, submittals for file, final payment, being that signed final pay request, their IC 134, their three-year warranty bond, and the consent of surety. So, with that, it is the engineer's opinion that the contractor, being GM Contracting, Incorporated, has satisfactorily completed the contract in accordance with plans and specifications, and that we would recommend accepting this work and approval of final payment to the contractor. Now, in addition to that, we're also looking at damages today. As you can see, the pink boundary shows those areas that have been damaged. We were able to coordinate with landowners, so this is all compaction damages and not crop damages. And as you can see here, this generally follows the proposed tile alignment. There was some areas adjacent roads where the damages extend a bit beyond the alignment or in areas where we had to go and connect the existing mainline, so they do exceed the, the standard boundary a bit in locations, but all, all acceptable occasions. So, a bit on damages, in the FER, we had estimated 27.54 acres of, of damage. At the time of, at this point, we were finding about 28.33 acres. This is just accounting for those, some of those areas where there was slight expansions to that damaged area due to cross-connections and areas by roads that needed to be reseeded and regraded. This also involves abandonment, so the map you can see here, the green line shown is the newly installed public tile line. The orange or gold line is the pre-existing mainline prior to the project, so we would recommend that that tile is abandoned, as it has been replaced by a new public tile in, in, throughout the entirety of the system. An asbilled has been formed for all of this work, so we've denoted all the private tile connections, all the public tile connections, and all of those locations are available through GPS. Line work's been shared with the county drainage staff, so that we'll be able to find all of these things in the future for landowners and for regular inspection and maintenance. So, a bit on total project costs, at the time of the FER, we had estimated a, a sum total project cost, including construction, engineering fees, administration costs of To date, we're projecting $568,134, so a bit of cost savings there. Again, there is some slight projections in there with construction administration work. There's a bit of final backend work related to getting material sent over to the county as well as this hearing. So, ultimately, it's the engineer's opinion that the Blue Earth County Ditch Number 79 improvement project has been completed. The existing public tile in the improved area should be abandoned, damages paid, and warranty period to begin. And ultimately, we recommend approval of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Any questions from the board for Jacob? Okay. At this time, we will open up the public comment portion of the hearing. If you would like to make a comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Is there anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 79 at this time of the acceptance hearing? Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 79? Last time, anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 79? Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no comment from the public, I will close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back to the county board. Any questions from the county board at this time? Can I get a motion to, and a second, to accept the draft findings and orders approving the engineer's contract acceptance report and order the final payment be issued to the contractor?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This concludes our County Ditch 79 acceptance hearing. Thank you, ISG. Thank you, Craig. Ryan?
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will move on to item number five, Public Works Capital Improvement Plan Set a Hearing Date. Candace, good morning, Candace.
Good morning.
How are you today?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Candace Sonic, Finance Director. I'm here this morning to request that the board schedule a public hearing for the purpose of adopting the county's capital improvement plan and for approving the issuance of capital improvement plan bonds. In accordance with Minnesota Statute, Section 373.40, the capital improvement plan must be approved by the county board following published notice and a public hearing. The county intends to issue capital improvement plan bonds to finance the construction of the Public Works facility, as outlined in the capital improvement plan. Therefore, I respectfully request the following actions: That the public hearing be scheduled for Tuesday, August 19th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. before the board; and that authorization be given to publish the required public notice in accordance with statutory requirements.
Thank you, Candace. Do you have a motion to set the hearing date?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. There you go, Candace.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
All right, at this time, we have to break in about 10 minutes, so I don't, do you want to start, Ryan, with your report? We have to stop in 10 minutes and break into.
I certainly can, if that's what you'd like.
Sure, we'll get you started. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a couple of action items for today, and then the rest of my report is informational. The first action item is consideration of a resolution for right-of-way acquisition on County State Aid Highway 5. This is for the reconstruction project scheduled for 2026 from Riverfront Drive to Cleveland And I would request with that your approval of this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the resolution? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, second action item is another right-of-way acquisition resolution, this time for County State Aid Highway 69 from the west intersection with US Highway 169 to the east intersection with US Highway 169 in South Bend Township. Would recommend approval of this resolution.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? Got a motion and a second for the right-of-way for 69? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right. With that, I can move into some information items. Project updates, County State Aid Highway 82 Victory Drive. R&amp;E Construction is placing gravel on the east trail and subcutting the west trail. All of the concrete pavement, except for the medians, is done. So they're still working on that. I knew where you were going to go. The signal and lighting work is still underway with the underground wiring, yet still being pulled and, and installed and things getting wired up. So we're getting close. We should be on track to meet the August 22nd completion date. Any questions on that one?
Looks good. I walked it this weekend.
So that, so the intersection won't be open till the 22nd?
I don't think so.
All right.
It's just because of safety, you know, on the job.
That's, that's fine. You know, you see, everything's there. It's just that, okay.
Yep. It's hard to see what's not ready yet.
The trail's not ready yet, unless it got ready yesterday.
Nope.
Well, yeah, but that, that should affect the.
Once the pavement goes down, I know.
But the wiring and stuff, that would affect.
Yep.
Looks good.
Well, the trail.
Looks really good.
Need, need adequate space to, you know, do the paving work and then get the, the seeding in the boulevards and the topsoil and everything safely installed.
It's less than three weeks, we can handle.
We can. Is the trail wider than the original trail?
They're each 10 feet. I believe the existing trails were close to that though.
Were they? It looked, it just seemed like it was nicer sized.
It's new and sloped really nice.
Well, I was just walking on gravel, so.
County State Aid Highway 29 Bridge Replacement Project was completed and opened to traffic on July 10th. County Road 184 Box Culvert Replacement was completed and reopened to traffic as well. And CASA 10 from a west county line to 20, segment from 32 to 20 should be reclaimed this week with hopes of placing gravel in the coming weeks. And likely paving in mid-September on that eastern piece. And if you remember, that piece west of 20 to the west county line will be left as gravel over the course of the winter due to settlement, new alignment, bridge replacement, et cetera. All of the centerline culvert and tile crossings from CASA 20 to the Suresco Township Hall are done. With work continuing on to the west, crews are hauling from the borrow site, placing fill and shoulder widening and regrade areas. And the bridge contractor is onsite and began bridge demolition yesterday. So things are changing out there. County State Highway 26 Bridge Replacement Project, still working on acquiring the right-of-way. The project's likely to be let this fall with construction to be either late fall or early 2026. County Road 139 Bridge Replacement Project M&amp;K is driving bridge piling this week, so we've got a lot of bridge work underway along with our big grading projects. County Road 156 will start this early September, we're anticipating. And then we have that slope stabilization and repair project on CASA 40. We have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow. That work is anticipated to happen this fall. County State Highway 5 from Riverfront Drive to Summit Avenue. Project plans are nearly ready to be submitted to MinDOT State Aid. We had to work through an issue. There's a location where we do have to do a block retaining wall. And we had some issues with the proximity of the homes and necessary reinforcement length. So working through some design exceptions with MinDOT on that, so I think we've got that clarified. So we'll make sure to be nearing, ready to complete.
And that's the 26 project.
2026.
26.
Yeah. We'd like to get bid this early winter, I would say.
But then the roundabout's still three or four years out.
Yeah, so the roundabout, we don't have any funding obligated. I am, I just reached out yesterday to MinDOT to maybe, it sounds like they'll be willing to assist us with the project funding application for some freight funding.
Okay.
That's available for calendar years 2029 or 2030. And so in my free time, ha, ha, ha. I'm, I'm trying to work on updating our 2026 to 2030 Transportation Improvement Plan that lays out all of our road and bridge projects. So I was actually working on that a little bit yesterday and enroughing that in to include the CASA 5 Roundabout Interchange at US Highway 14 in 2030. So it's very helpful to have shown in our transportation plan that we, we show that we're committed to the project and help with future funding applications. So we're going to take a shot at the freight funding, if we can get an application put in, in time. And then the other program we're going to look at is the MinDOT Local Partnership Program, which is what we use to reconstruct the roundabout interchange of Riverfront Drive and US Highway 14.
I think the open house went well, but there was just a little confusion that people were there thinking that 26, the roundabout was up for discussion for next year. And the, the staff did a nice job explaining that, no, this is the, the pavement for the road is going to be next year, but the roundabout underneath the Four Lane Highway is several years out, so.
Thank you. We would leave the concrete pavement in place north of Cleveland, and that's would be the project terminus. We did get some feedback from Holtmeier Construction slash DMI on the size of some of their local equipment that needs to be able to navigate those roundabouts and the different freight that's out there. Concerns about being able to navigate the roundabout and delays associated with the roundabouts because obviously it takes longer for a truck to make its way through the intersection. However, the, the majority of the feedback that we got during the open house was dramatically different than what we got during the corridor study, so.
Oh, good.
It was, it was really nobody was, aside from, you know, that, that contractor that expressed their concerns. We didn't really hear opposition voiced.
Well, and that, and that's, that's why we have those public informational meetings, so people can get their questions answered. But, you know, if, if it is just a little bit of inconvenience to a truck that goes through there once or twice a week during the construction season, we have to build a road that's going to accommodate several thousand cars every day.
Right.
To move traffic too. So, I mean, you guys and the staff do a good job explaining that, but I appreciate you working with the big contractors that have to haul that equipment because it is difficult.
And we'll, you know, certainly take that into consideration in the design. How am I doing on time?
We got a few minutes yet.
Okay.
You don't have to rush through it. You just have to come back after or don't.
I can't get out of here. CASA 15 and 28 in St. Clair, BCM is working on shovel drive. They plan to close CASA 28 north of 15 this Monday coming up, August 11th, to begin reconstructing that segment. So from 15 to the north to the post office in St. Clair, we'll begin reconstruction Monday. Private utility relocations are taking place on the rest of CASA 15. And if things go well, the contractor may begin working on the rest on 15 east of 28 yet this fall. And then the west piece of that, for sure, will be reconstructed in 2026. CASA 10 from Vernon Center to 0.9 miles east, design is progressing rather slowly. But I guess we're looking, that was planned for 2026. The bridge is not eligible. The bridge is a bit of an anomaly within the county. It's a fracture critical bridge with a pin and hanger system. And it requires special inspections. The bridge is relatively narrow. So it's not eligible for state bridge bonding replacement money yet. I think the plan is that if we don't, if it does not become eligible and we don't get bridge bonds, we still want to get that bridge off of our system and replace it. So we would do so with sales tax or County State Aid Highway money. And that's been pushed back to at least 2027, just because of project costs are going up and revenues are not matching. So we're struggling to deliver everything we would like to, so we're having to push some projects back. 20, I'm sorry, CASA 10 from Vernon Center, I just talked about that one. 69 reconstruct, the piece we just did the right-of-way, so this will be the south segment of CASA 69 through La Hilaire. A project open house meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August 19th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Public Works Department. Maybe that'd be a good spot to stop because the flood damages is going to take some time to get through. I may be in the free time, meantime, though I could give you this now, if you'd like to look at them at all. Something with respect to the trail that we'll talk about during the flood damages.
Yeah, we got a lot going on with flood stuff.
Yes. Lot of damages over the last couple of weeks.
All right. Well, that'd be a good time to take a break. So at this time, we're going to, I'm going to ask for a motion in a second here to close the session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13B.05. So subtitle 3B, allowing closure under the attorney-client privilege for confidential discussion with legal counsel regarding the case of Patrick A. Lees and Lynn M. Guzman Lees versus Mankato Township, Blue Earth County District Court, File Number 07CB241550.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the board meeting and discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We will move over to the meeting room for our closed session. All right. We will move on to Public Works Update continuation. So, thank you, Ryan.
We're back. So over the last few weeks, we encountered a considerable amount of flood damages with some excessive rainfall amounts, ranging anywhere, I think, over the course of a week. They received in some areas up to 12 inches and in certain, just in one occurrence, kind of along the County State Highway 90 corridor, they received eight, up to eight inches in one shot. So pretty dramatic amount of rainfall in a very short amount of time. Some of the damages that we noticed, just as I quickly kind of go through these, County State at Highway 35, we cleared a culvert intake grate with a backhoe on the 21st. We then received six inches of rain on the 23rd. We cleared the grate again on the 25th and cleaned the ravine with the excavator on the 28th. The area overtopped through a residential yard. The resident did just probably triple to quadruple the size of the residence, creating more runoff and had done some other site grading too on the site that may not have helped out. But it did jump across their yard to another intake. County State at Highway 1, the outfall drainage, and this is just south of Mankato, where all of the drainage comes down from Skyline, our large portion of Mark's runoff comes down the hill. And there's a riprap flume and there's actually another pipe that takes it. That outfall draining, that large portion, that runoff from Skyline exceeded the intake's capacity, flooding the adjacent residence garage. The intakes and flumes worked like they should. The garage was flooded to the water jumping out of the waterway and outside of our right-of-way. The road curb and gutter and shoulders are scoured and undercut with the shoulders are closed until we can figure out a way to fix those. I think right now we're proposing to pump some concrete fill-in underneath them to fill in, so we don't have to tear that out and redo it. But there's probably about a three to four foot void underneath the curb and shoulder that washed out as the water jumped over the road. On County Road 126, which is just directly south of 9 in the village of Rapidan, there's a low spot where the water must drain through an agricultural tile intake to the northeast. They want a culvert installed under 126. The water can drain to the west, but I doubt that that landowner to the west is going to be cooperative of pushing more water their way. There are some significant issues in the village of Rapidan in general with their drainage. This resident did say that they received 10 inches of rain. And this is, again, it's, it's this low area that takes quite a bit of water is, is the outlet is a four-inch tile intake, which is inadequate. So I have talked with one of the Rapidan Township Board members, fortunately, works in our department, so it makes it easy, about, he's going to bring up with the township board, they are the drainage authority for the village of Rapidan, and they do have an assessment and an agreement for the tile outline, I'm sorry, tile outlet through a field to a ravine to the northeast, about pursuing a drainage study and possible improvement project in the future. So they're going to, as the drainage authority, they would begin that process and we would cost participate based kind of on our drainage area or volume drained. With that said, the fairgrounds receive considerable rain as well. Typically speaking, for the fair, out of our budget, we provide motor grader and operator to blade all of the roads prior to applying dust control. We then apply dust control, that's almost $3,000. We provide a motor grader and loader with operators for about four hours each to prepare the track. We provide a motor grader, loader, and volunteer operator for the entire weekend for the grandstand event. So that, we have to find an employee that's willing to volunteer for that time. And fortunately, we've been, had folks that are willing to do it. We provided four loads of wood chips, and they requested five loads of gravel, which was about $600, and then they also borrowed cones. This year with all the flooding, we additionally provided a couple more loads of gravel, about 230 bucks. Another eight loads of class five limestone, about $1,200. A load of inch and a half limestone, about $180. And this is just material costs, not our labor, not our labor or equipment.
And this is all done?
For the fairgrounds. That's, historically, we provided that to the fairgrounds. So the total material is about $1,611 additional, just to kind of get them back up and running for their operation. So I just want to make the board aware kind of of what we've historically been expected to contribute to the fair, to keep them in operation. On Copper Mountain Drive, the crews cleaned the culvert, cleaned a culvert on the 25th. The runoff volume from the ravines was greater than the culvert's capacity, resulting in the flooding of the adjacent agricultural business building. This is that red shed that was built down in the lower lying area, so that flooded that out. It's not the first time that's been flooded out in recent history with large rainfall events. The request has been posed, several of these people have requested that we install bigger culverts, and I don't know that we're in a position to start doing that and chasing all of these spots and installing big culverts all over the county to meet these kind of what should be anomaly type of events, typically a township road drainage is sized for a 25-year event, which is what that is. On County State Highway 9, we had a driveway west of the dam area completely washed out. We've had to repair that a few times in the last several years. We do believe that it maybe had an installation defect the last time. And so we're going to repair it one more time with the 48-inch pipe that's there, which is already a very large driveway pipe. And we're going to increase the riprap armoring on it and see how it holds up. Other damages, we had water topping the road on County Road 159, 167, 183, 187, and partially on CASA 14 north of Minnesota Lake. Lots of shoulders washed out, sloughing areas on CASA 1 and a location on CASA 90. Sediment pond on CASA 33 completely filled in from the ravine. You know, we have a lot of areas where these ravines are draining large areas on top and they dump into our right-of-way or adjacent to our right-of-way and bring a lot of sediment with them. And then CASA 16 between 10 and 4, erosion by the bridge in Minnesota Water Monitoring Station. The Red Jacket Trail, as you know, had to be closed. Multiple washed and sloughed areas on the trails led us to concerns about public safety in continuing to use the trail. We had already been evaluating the trail culverts and bridges for a future rehabilitation project. And we had planned to complete a funding application via the Minnesota DNR Legacy Funds that are available now that we have the regional parks and trails, parks and trails of significance designation. I provided a map to the board, I apologize for walking that in today, but I, we just got it kind of completed with having to close the trail on Friday, that shows all of the different drainage crossings on the trail. The legend shows that green tags are pipes that are in good condition. Yellow is pipes that are in fair condition. Magenta or kind of pink is pipes that are in bad condition that'll need action. And then the ones in red are critical condition that need to be addressed immediately before we would be able to reopen the trail. There are three critical locations with preliminary cost estimates completed by staff. Bridge 0411, where, which would be, if you start from left going right, it'd be the first red trestle bridge. That's an 80-foot wooden trestle. We had already, those bridges, timber bridges are already in very poor condition. Bob and Josh and I actually reviewed those about three weeks ago. And I had kind of gone through the safety inspection elements that were noted. We had already been contemplating removing those and just installing a large diameter culvert and a significant amount of fill so that we could eliminate having a bridge and reduce the cost. So the cost to tear out that timber bridge and put in a large 72-inch culvert is about $187,000. And then as we go down, Trestle Bridge, R0410 is about 100 feet long. That again is another timber bridge. That is the one that is now a straight vertical drop-off where the wing wall is completely washed out. We're starting to lose the pavement. It's very unsafe, so that's why we closed the trail. It's one of the reasons why we closed the trail. Replacing that with a 72-inch culvert would be about $215,000. And then as we carry on to the south and to the right, there's a double 72-inch reinforced concrete pipe that's had severe joint and slope failure. So the slope failed and plugged one of the culverts and the joints were already misaligned, so it started piping through and washing out. And we've got about a giant two-foot sag, about the length of a car in the trail, where, you know, obviously material has been lost. That one's very challenging to get to. It's about a half a mile from the closest access point. There's not many access points on the trail when it comes to doing maintenance. So with that being said, the cost to replace that. So, with that being said, the cost to replace that with two 72-inch pipes, equivalent to what's there now, would be about $472,000. We also did look at replacing them to eliminate the amount of fill. The problem is, you don't have an access point for half a mile, and now you need all this fill, needs to be moved properly in and out. And now you're talking about backing a truck, a dump truck, down an eight-foot wide trail for half a mile every, with every load.
Thanks.
It's very challenging. We did look at pedestrian bridges. Could be a possibility. The prices range from $550,000 to $665,000 per location based on very preliminary estimates. So, for the first two, we think would stick with putting in culverts because they're closer. We could get there from Casaw 33, but for the one and a half mile down, we may evaluate a pedestrian trail. It does require a significant amount of trail tree clearing, and the problem with estimating these costs is that these are very preliminary and very high level, and we don't know what kind of factor contractors are going to put on this work because of the difficult access and the just very limited ability to pursue the work efficiently. There are five additional locations where the culverts are in bad condition. Total price to replace those culverts is estimated at approximately $170,000. Additionally, the high trestle timber decking is also very deteriorated and needs replacement. The initial preliminary estimate for this work is estimated to cost between $620,000 and $915,000, depending on if the timber ties need replacement. So, we've hired Erickson Engineering to perform an inspection and assessment of the high trestle bridge to determine the full extent of necessary repairs, and I would anticipate that that'll turn into a little bit of a scoping project to determine what the best solution is. You know, there's a possibility maybe of taking those off completely and putting a concrete deck over the top too. If that'd be more cost-effective, we'd like to explore that. That inspection is anticipated to happen in the coming months, so they're going to, because it's timber, timber elements are a little bit more challenging and require some specialized tools and inspection methods that our staff aren't really fully, completely trained, or we don't have the equipment to do. So, we've hired out a consultant at the recommendation of the State Aid Bridge Office. The preliminary cost estimate for repaving the trail is approximately $340,000. So, that puts the total project cost estimate for the entire project, including critical bad-condition culverts and bad-condition culverts, high trestle redecking and repairs, and repaving anywhere from 2.3 to 3.3 million dollars. So, again, we had planned to pursue, and our budget request had had funding in continuous years to try to build up a cachet so that we could have a reserve to pay for the contributing costs to match with the DNR Legacy Funds and doing future funding applications. Unfortunately, our hand is forced that if we want to reopen the trail in the near future, and I wouldn't say that we'd even be able to get reopened this year with these challenges, it would require at least, at a bare minimum, the repair of the three red, the three red tags that show the two trestle bridge replacements and then the double 72 inches. And then, I did on the front page provide a summary cost estimate. Again, this is speculative and preliminary, but it kind of just denotes those major items to give the board an idea of our range of cost that the project would be at. So, the trail remained closed. We're going to continue evaluating the alternatives, especially primarily the timber on the high trestle, but these other items do require repair before we can reopen the trail. This is obviously not a budgeted item.
In the rains, we've been getting, haven't been getting better.
No, absolutely not.
Wow.
It's sad.
It is.
A million dollars is to get it open again.
Right.
It's, it's really disappointing because we, we had been, I guess it's good to a degree that we had already begun scoping this a little bit and trying to put together some plans and cost estimates in anticipation of trying to apply for some funding, but obviously this massive rainfall event has forced our hand with a few of these items.
Yeah.
So, what do you want from us today? Anything or this just putting it in front of us?
Well, I guess I just maybe perhaps, I'm putting it out in front of the board. I don't know that I expect an answer, but I think as we find out more information with respect to the high trestle, we will probably begin on designing and probably coming up with project, coming up with project plans for replacing those two timber bridges and plans for replacing the culverts, but ultimately, funding will, the funding gap will be significant. I don't anticipate that they will be eligible for FEMA funding. If that opportunity arises, we'll certainly try, but we had already had some previous erosion that we were going to be repairing on one of the timber bridges where it's now completely washed out, and FEMA had denied that funding already from last year's event.
What's the new way of FEMA going grants instead of sending the bill? Is that going to be better?
Well, I don't know if we'll get a declaration and even have an event that they would be eligible for at this point.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, asked Ryan, thoughts on the DNR grant? You talked about that. Is like, what are you looking at for a timeframe or potential eligibility for that?
Yep. Those would likely be out two to three years ahead of us. So, I just sent an email this morning requesting a call with the grant coordinator from the DNR to discuss funding availability and is there any money that might be available to help us right now. So, we're reaching out on that to find out. The trail is open from Mankato across the high trestle, and then once you cross the high trestle, there's a paved, it's a township road that comes down the hill and descends and brings you back to Casaw 1 just south of the trestle bridge. So, people that are using the trail could then jump onto the shoulders of County-state Highway 1 if they want to continue on, or they could loop back via the road and get back onto the trail, either the stairs or other methods.
Oh, okay.
Any more questions on that before? Any other comments? Nope. Okay. Moving on to some quick maintenance activity updates. Obviously, heavy rain repairs, we talked about that. We should finish our gravel hauling contract for the resurfacing this week or next. The seal coating started approximately 42 centerland miles this year. And we started mowing out the northern third of the county right-of-way, spraying trees in brush, tile intake culvert repairs, replaced a failing 24-inch tile and intake at Bray Park under the boat landing Batumis area. So, if you saw that dug up, that's why it was actually sucking and washed out, a big area there. And we finished the new garage. It's sited and painted at Duck Lake Park for the caretaker residents. The last item I have on my agenda is review of the Rapidan Dam, County-state Highway 9 Bridge update. Again, I'll, because the whole thing is provided in the board packet, I'll just try to hit the highlights. On the Casaw 9 Bridge, on July 8th, we participated in a project management team meeting with TKDA. We discussed kind of at length the bridge pier piling difference on whether we should continue with the driven H piles that was proposed. I think TKDA is shifting to deep-drilled shafts, as we had initially thought, to provide more higher level of scour resistance and added bridge resiliency. So, they're anticipating more well-defined project cost estimate should be available in late August, and permitting work is anticipated to begin in September. They're holding the project memorandum until MinDOT completes the Section 106 review. We, we also considerably discussed the board comments about the cost of stabilizing arm of the river channel, which obviously led to the discussion regarding the bridge pier foundations. On July 8th, I spoke with Willie Ravenberg, MinDOT State Aid, about the county board work session that was held earlier that morning. On July 9th, I further discussed the bridge replacement with Willie again, discussing deeper pier foundations and where we were going from here. He did advise me to be aware of possible FHWA delays due to recent financial and staffing cuts at the federal level as things have to go to Washington DC. On the 11th, I spoke with Chris Nobak from MinDOT State Aid, recapped the board work session and discussed the alternative options for the pier foundations. Chris did advise that if we go past the four years of the event, we will no longer be eligible for the federal emergency relief funds because it would be no longer considered an emergency project. I think we've discussed that. On the 21st, we participated in another weekly call with TKDA. 25th, they submitted the preliminary bridge plans to MinDOT State Aid for review and comments. On the 29th, we participated in a meeting with TKDA again, discussing the DNR data requests. The DNR requested a considerable amount of data regarding the river channel and the bridge and the dam removal, so a portion of that had to be provided by TKDA and some by BAR. And their work is on a little bit of a hold until MinDOT provides plan review comments. So, that's probably relatively good timing for us given where we are in our decision-making. On the 30th, we had another meeting between them and MinDOT to review the bridge plans and a lot of those elements we already talked about. I won't go too far into that. State Aid is going to be looping in their MinDOT Bridge Office, main office, and then their foundations unit because of the complexity and magnitude of this bridge. With respect to the dam, on July 9th, we participated in an agency meeting with the core and the DNR. BAR made a presentation. There was discussion on whether the channel should remain where it is now or go back onto its historical alignment. I think we made the argument that it needs to go back to its historical alignment because if we don't do something, it's going to continue to erode to the west and east embankments, creating future problems for ourselves and private landowners.
Have we noticed with the significant rains that we've had that there's more erosion going down or not?
It's just kind of a continuation. It's, I, we haven't surveyed it again, but we will be doing that this fall. But yes, it's continuing to erode. A lot of those severe rainfall events were kind of right at or above the dam watershed, so...
Didn't come through that area as much.
Yeah, if it would have gone through like the south part of the county and north part of Fairville County, we would have got it all.
Okay.
Yeah. We presented questions to the agencies for their consideration. Do they see any fatal flaws in our approach? Can the upstream channel be allowed to evolve over time in lieu of a future project? Can the DNR lead the ecosystem restoration project upstream? Is there any state funding available to help us? They didn't really answer any of those questions. They just provided some other questions for us about head cutting of the dam and head cutting of the stream elevations. The BAR asked if the bridge was not constructed or if the foundation didn't depend on the armoring, then could the channel armoring be dramatically reduced, you know, per our board conversation? Again, that question was left unanswered. They believe some grade controls needed due to the disturbance of the river created by the dam, but they wouldn't elaborate on that. The core ultimately is looking for the feasible, less environmentally impactful alternative, the LETPA. That's really what they stuck to their guns on. We requested feedback before the tentatively scheduled August 26 county board work session, and if we don't get adequate feedback, I think we would propose to push that back to, I believe, September 9th potentially. We also need to involve the MPCA more and get them involved in these meetings. So, again, following this, the DNR did, did request considerable amount of data that's being processed and sent to them. The one interesting comment that one of the DNR staff made is they typically don't do stream stabilization in these situations due to the risk associated with it and the cost, because these rivers are so highly erosive and challenging. And so, that was a really interesting comment, but again, there was 10 different people from the DNR on the phone, and they hadn't all circled their wagons to come up with a unanimous opinion yet, so they weren't willing to offer much up.
Sure.
By way of guidance. On the 14th, we participated in a FERC license surrender coordination call between MinDOT and FERC. A lot of it really surrendered around, a lot of it really centered around determining the project impact areas and some of the concerns with the different approaches. The FERC is really trying to identify the area potential effect. We, I pushed again that we need more guidance from the DNR and the core because they were on the call. They identified additional steps that both agencies will be taking as they work to resolve their Section 106 review process. On the 15th of July, we participated in a joint meeting with BAR and TKDA, again, following up on conversation about using large diameter drilled shafts instead of the H piles, reducing the river armoring requirements hopefully. BAR does not confident that they would allow us to dramatically reduce the river armoring.
That was my question. Are we going to have a...
Yeah, they're not confident that they would say, okay, now you don't have to do anything. Without the bridge replacement, the river channel would look similar, but the scope of the armoring may be diminished some. Their, BAR is working through that, and each iteration that they do on their hydraulic modeling takes them about a week. I mean, this is very complex, very impressive work that they're doing. It's very detailed, and it's obviously what these iterations pushing us at or over our budget, so we'll likely be having to look at an amendment for the hydraulics and hydrology review, but this is a necessary process.
So, Ryan, when you say they're, it's reducing the cost, they're putting numbers to that in steps or what, what is the process?
Well, I think they need to get the modeling done first and come up with...
If there's no bridge there. Is that kind of what?
If the, can you reiterate your question maybe?
Yep. So, if, if you change the format of the bridge or the design of the bridge, they're putting in, they're calculating what the river restoration will look like?
Yeah.
Are they still doing one with no bridge at all? Are we, is that being talked about yet? No bridge at all, what would the river restoration look like?
I, I think the, what we're looking at right now is if we change the foundation of the bridge peers to these deep-drilled shafts that are scour resistant and add resiliency so that we can, how much does that reduce the extents of the river armoring? And it would shift some of the costs, so it would shift the cost for the, the pier foundations would be covered by Federal Highway Administration with a revision, and it would take that cost away from the secondary project that would be funded by the county and/or FEMA. And I think we, you know, discussing that with MinDOT who has to carry it to FHWA for final approval, MinDOT thought that that made quite a bit of sense because of our interim condition that we're designing for with a bridge in and the dam still in.
So, we'll have a number of less restoration, more peers?
Correct.
We don't want this number to be higher than this number?
That's, that's what my goal is to bring to you.
Or if it's even equal, what's the, what's the, I mean...
Right.
At some point, if it's going to cost us 15 million more to make the bridge stronger, but it's still going to cost us 20 million instead of 25 million to restore the riverbank, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense neither.
That, I think, is where we're looking at is what's the typical...
So, you're trying to, okay. But we're still not running any numbers yet as far as if the bridge wasn't there?
I, I think the, if the bridge wasn't there, is the same condition as the bridge having deep, strong foundations that don't require extensive armory. So, what's the minimum level of armory necessary?
Yeah, that would be my question. If it's not there, what's the armory?
And that, I think, is, that's the same or very, very similar to what's it like with the bridge there, but with those deep-drilled shaft foundations.
Oh, you think it'll be that close?
I think they'll be, you know, we're working through the process.
Okay, all right.
Picking up, on the 17th, we participated in another meeting with BAR. Just kind of recapping the project, they're anticipating the EAW should be completed relatively soon. BAR is comfortable with the hydraulics and hydrology design results for the river channel as it sits now. It does require significant river channel armoring and grading. Discussed the DNR's comments about fish passage and kayaking and canoeing down the river being a necessity. Discussed other materials that could be used in lieu of large riprap. I don't know that we came to any kind of conclusion on that. And BAR needs to address the county board question of how can the river channel armory cost be significantly reduced? Again, due to the iterative nature of the channel design and coordination with TKDA, two-thirds of the H and H budget is extended. I think we talked about that. BAR submitted an email on July 21st to the Environmental Quality Board formally requesting they determine if the county or the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources is the responsible government unit for the EAW. That response was received, I believe, late last week that the county has been designated as the RGU or the EAW, based on decision made by the EQB. We had another call on July 22nd between TKDA and BAR. We did execute change order number one with BAR for performance of a third-party review for the river channel design as we had discussed previously. And on the 28th, we met with FEMA to discuss the project, and that really centered around finalizing project quantities. So, BAR had sent some information back to FEMA. We're hoping to see that finalize in the coming weeks, and then we would move on to the scoping phase. We really beat the heck out of the fact that we need to be involved with the scoping. We don't want FEMA to get too far down a rabbit hole and it not be a feasible project for the theoretical repair of the dam, so I really hope they can keep the county and BAR involved so that we can come up with a consensus and provide some of the cost information that BAR's already developed to FEMA for their theoretical repair cost estimate. That, that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I want to just go back up to your change order with the third-party review.
Yes.
At what point do we not do that because of all the other things we have going on? Or we want, that third-party review is for what we heard at the work session, correct?
It's, yeah, it's for, and I think it helps because it's a second set of eyes and it's another theoretical design. and it's another theoretical design on, on the river channel stabilization, so somebody else looking at the modeling that BAR has done and poking holes in it.
They might even come up with the fact that it's, that the plan we have already is going to be this, that, or the other thing.
Yeah.
Which would be helpful to us.
I, I think it's going to be helpful, for sure.
All right. I just, you know, we spend a lot of money doing this stuff and we end up throwing that out, but I...
This is very complex work that they're doing, and that's why they wanted another set of eyes on it.
No, I get, I get that part. And we talked, and it was an alarming price. I mean, it was expensive, but it wasn't.
We are doing, you know, a similar, but it was already included in the scope for the bridge, just because of the complexity of it.
All right, other questions or comments for Ryan before we let him?
Had a lot to digest.
Yeah, go find...
Busy as usual.
Yes. All right, Ryan, well, thanks for all your help.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work.
Thanks, Mark.
Tell your staff to be careful out there.
Yeah.
All right, with that, we will move down to item number seven, county attorney update. It's in our packet. Megan, you have anything to add at this point, or?
No, as always, if you have any questions, please let me know, and I will work to get you answers.
All righty.
Thank you.
It's always a very thorough report, so appreciate that on you guys' staff time, so we'll move down to some administrative.
All right, Mr. Chair, the first, first item in there is the county board minutes for the July twenty-second meeting.
Got a motion and a second for the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the next item are the bills, two weeks of bills for the weeks of July seventeenth and the week of July twenty-fourth.
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pay the bills? Any discussion, questions?
I got one. The RV Off-It Company. It's three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars is the equipment purchased, so I just wanted to know what, what, what RV?
First week, second week?
First week or second?
I think it's the second week.
Starts with an R?
RD.
RD.
RD? Yeah, it's for the first week, I'm sorry.
R and D? Building a construction project? Probably works.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I, I'm going to have to research a little bit to get that back to you. You have that information?
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I believe that's for a motor grader.
Motor grader. That would make sense. Okay, that's about the right price. Thank you. That's all we have.
All right. Any other questions? I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Human Resources.
All right, Mr. Chair, there is one action item on the human resources agenda, and there's also a memo accompanying this action item. This is for authorization to increase hours for the waste and recycling technician from twenty hours to twenty-six hours. This is for two of them. This really goes back to when took over the operations of the landfill, that this just didn't really get caught in the budgeting, so really just looking to change these to a point five to point six-five for those actions.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the recycling technician part-time? Any discussion? That program's worked out really well out there. Very happy with the steps we took to take that over. All right, I have a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, just go over some of the informational items on the HR agenda. I have an employment of a correctional officer, employment of a probation officer, have the resignation of accounting coordinator in finance, resignation of an existing county attorney, recruitment initiated for that replacement for the assistant county attorney, have a lateral transfer of a social worker child protection specialist that's going to Social Worker Disability Services. Then authorization to initiate recruitment for that social worker child protection position. Have a promotion of a maintenance tech one to a maintenance tech two, and then we have an increase of hours from our licensed specialist, licensed center specialist from a point five to a point seven-four. And with that, a recruitment for a licensed center specialist for a point five for that backfill.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Any questions on the human resources? Okay, we'll move on.
All right, next item under admin items is the change orders for the All Seasons Arena. Several that are coming through this time. First one is the Trade Package 1A. This is a change order in the amount of twenty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. Alluded to this a little bit last time. This is something on the wall where the old MSU Maverick and logos are. This was something initially that was going to stay the same, but after doing the work and looking at this as, I'm not updating it, it kind of was out of place, so this one would be really updating that side of the wall to get that more in line with the rest of the building. For Trade Package thirteen A, this is an actual deduct of twenty-four thousand, and this is just some piping that goes out through the parking lot, and really what they were able to find out is you could be, really just fill this in with grout and abandon those in place, so able to take off some, some dollars. I think the first time we've come to you saying, hey, we're going to deduct instead of have any addition. Next is the Trade Package twenty-three B. This is for one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars to add a hose bib in the ice equipment room and then install new parts of the emergency exhaust fan. And then, Trade Package twenty-six A, this is for two thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents, and this is to replace some lighting, vegetable lights in the main entrance. And then, the last one was Trade Package thirty-one A for thirty-five thousand, sixty-two dollars and eighty cents. This is for some soil corrections under the north rink, some foundation removals in the lobby area, and some additional sand backfill. So, you put those all together, the above change orders increased the project by thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-two cents, and if these are approved, would, the contingency would be decreased to one hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and one dollars and sixty-eight cents. So, at this point, we'd make that recommendation to approve the change orders as listed.
Move to approval. Second.
Got a motion and a second for the change orders? Any discussion?
Looking, it's looking really good though.
It's coming together. All right, if there's no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the next item is the, from DHS, the Community Living Infrastructure Grant. This is a grant that would typically come through for the Human Services approval, but based on the timing when they got this and getting expenses, decided to move this through as an admin item to get this through and approved through Human Services. This is a contractor renewal with the Department of Human Services. It funds point four or five FTE for a Human Services Supervisor dedicated to housing and a point one-five FTE for county staff to implement the housing support with the GRH programs. Term of this is from July first, twenty-twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven, with two hundred and two thousand dollars in funding. Just a note on this, it is an eight point three percent reduction in funding of this grant from the, the previous cycle. At this point, I would recommend approving the CLI grant.
I'll move it.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Second from Mark. Any discussion? I think the only comment I have to make is a question that got posed to me, I think, was a township officers meeting, when we talked about our levy and our decrease in income, and Bob was nice enough to tell them that our grants and our federal funding and state funding is reducing, and our costs are still going up by as much or more of some of the reductions, so makes for a big gap. But we'll muddle through it, so. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the next item is a resolution. This resolution is for the Blueworth County Sheriff's Office to enter into a grant agreements with the Department of Public Safety, Office of Traffic Safety, and the Minnesota State Grant Programs. This really allows the sheriff to execute these agreements and to implement these here for Blueworth County.
Move to approval. Second.
Got a motion and a second for the grant for the sheriff? Any discussion? These grants are very much appreciated, but just to be nice if they keep up with our increases, so. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And then, the final item in that packet there is a, it's a resolution approving the State of Minnesota Joint Powers Agreement with the County of Blueworth on behalf of the sheriff regarding the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. This is just allowing the sheriff's office to continue working with, with ICAC for those investigations for these internet crimes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, with that, Basset Drive Agreement was pulled from the agenda. Looks like we are on to committee reports from commissioners. Patty, I'm going to start with you today.
All right, it's going to be a quick report. After our last board meeting, I attended the work session on the twenty-second. On the twenty-fourth and twenty-ninth, I sat in on a couple of the NACO calls, and that ends my report.
Thank you very much for that report. Vance?
All right, last meeting, we had our work session. The next day, on the twenty-third, I attended a MRCI Moon Dogs event, which went very well until the clouds opened up, and we got three and a half inches of rain that night. But it was good for me, because as, as part of the executive staff, I was able to meet with many of the staff members of MRCI, and they had special name tags, so I could walk up to them, introduce myself, talk to them, find out what they did, and it went out, it was a really good event, and I, I expressed that yesterday at our MRCI meeting, that it was something that they, you know, you can't do anything about the weather, but it certainly was good for the staff. On Friday, the twenty-fifth, Mark and I attended the MSSA Region Nine Summer Legislative Breakfast. It was a great breakfast, had legislators and senators, Senator Friends was there, so it was a good, good way to converse and issue, talk to, about issues. Let's see, Detox Board Meeting on the twenty-eighth. I had a Blueworth, Nicklet County Safe Roads, our towards zero death meeting on the thirtieth, and like I already said yesterday, I had a MRCI Finance Board Committee meeting, and then followed up with an MRCI Board Meeting. And that would be the end of my report.
All right. Thank you. Vance, Mark?
On the July twenty-second, yep, as mentioned, we had a work session after the board meeting. Friday, July twenty-fifth, as Vance said, we had the MSSA, and that was worthwhile to go, and it's good discussions. And then, on the Wednesday, the thirtieth of July, we had our MAPLE, it was a summer conference, it was here in Mankato, we hosted it, so, and that went well, so that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Mark. My report, I was at the county board work session. We had a couple ditch informational meetings, very small ditches, but very expensive prices, so discussion is just starting on those. Lot of challenges for those landowners, trying to get that dealt with. Had our Emergency Communication Board. Mark and his group took over as the administrative assistant, I guess you would call it, because Brenda retired from Blueworth County, and Blueworth County will not be doing it anymore, so we had our first meeting with him and his staff person there. That went really well, and then that afternoon, I had my EMS meeting with Mark. Things are going well there also. They got some new grants and business as usual. Was at the fair over the weekend for a bit on one or two of the mornings, and then off to Madison Lake for the parade, and then talked to some staff about the RFD processing, and got some more information on that. That is my report. That should bring us to the end of our agenda. Does anybody else have any else for the good of the order? If not, I would entertain a motion to recess for lunch at Maggie's over in Mapleton. Mark? Second? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We are recessed.